Thank you. Thank you, Sam. Good evening and welcome to our April 15th, 2025 City of Angels Camp City Council Meeting. Rose, roll call.
Mayor Schamonte.
Present.
Vice Mayor Scherrato.
Present.
Councilmember Monkotta.
Present.
Councilmember Brolio.
Present.
Councilmember Beehill.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was no action taken in closed session, which direction was just given to our city administrator. Moving on to item six, approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Pam, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are none, sir.
Hearing none. Any council member have any changes or additions?
I'll move to approve these items.
A second.
Been a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the public? Hearing none. Rose?
Beehill.
Aye.
Scherrato.
Aye.
Schamonte.
Aye.
Monkotta.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff replaced on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Jessica, your... And then she goes on.
That's fine. I'm okay.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jessie Fowler.
You have to turn the mic on.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Thank God.
Hi. Okay, so I'm Jessie Fowler. I'm the Agriculture Commissioner and I am the Director of Weights and Measures for Calabres County. I was asked to come by to speak a little bit to... So we've been receiving some unsolicited seed packages from China. This is actually something that happened in 2020 as well, and this is going across the United States. It's just, it's very random. We have received them in Calabres County. They're both small packages. They're very nondescript. It's pretty obvious they're from China. That's where it says they're from. The issue with it is, because most people, you know, free seeds, hey, great, is we don't know what these seeds are or why they're being sent. It is guessed that it's part of a brushing scam, which was part of your handout. It speaks to what that is, which is... It's more of an innocuous, kind of more cheaty, where they basically are just trying to just send out stuff to verified actresses to pump up their own feedbacks, or the weed themselves feedback. That's glowing, of course. But the issue is, we don't, we don't know what it is. We don't know for sure if that's what they're doing. So these could be noxious weed species. So that means that they could be something that outcompetes native vegetation. That could be detrimental or natural resources. It could be something that's toxic to livestock or pets. So this is something that, it's, don't plant these. Even if you have planted, there's, there's no penalty or anything, but just bring it into us because we actually are working in concert with the United States Department of Agriculture and the California Departments of Food and Agriculture to catalog all these seeds and to then properly destroy them. The other thing too, since I've got the mic, I'm a liaison also for the Fish and Game Commission for Calabres County. And on Saturday, May 3rd, they're having their 25th Annual Kids Fishing Clinic. It's up at Murphy's Community Park. If you've got kids, grandkids, it's first through eighth grade. It's 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM. And it's free, completely free, and they'll supply everything to you, but it's a great day to just go out and go fishing. And they actually stalk too, so you're probably gonna catch something. I just, I brought a flyer. And then the other thing too, since a lot of people don't know all the programs we have, because we do have 13 different programs that we regulate, I brought some handouts, just informational, just, you know, who we are, what we do, and how we can help you guys and serve our community. So any, any questions for me that I can...
We can't ask you any questions.
Thanks.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you want to bring those handouts to me all? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Appreciate it.
Oh, John?
Okay. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you for telling us.
Thank you.
Is it on or off?
It's on.
It's on.
Oh, now, it was on. My name is John Overton. I am a resident of Calabres County for almost 33 years and a retired teacher from Bradhart High School. And I am the chairperson for Gray Sales Covenant Church. And I got a couple of questions which will lead into why I'm talking right now. Have any of you seen the banners or the banner for the high school basketball, girls' basketball team on the fence at the high school? I would probably, hope that you've probably seen those. Have you seen the anti-abortion sign at the Catholic Church? I know I have.
Yes.
Okay. Seized Candies, the booth at Calabres Lumber was the pregnancy center. They have a banner. My point is, have you seen the banners for Gray Sales Covenant Church? I got one yes. Those banners were taken down yesterday. We were through the code enforcement required to take our banners down. And I personally have a problem with that because in my mind, there has been banners. In fact, even today, when I went to Angels Market to shop, I go across the street and Wayne &amp; Sons has the exact same kind of banner that we had flying today. But we were required to take our banners down. I would ask the council to consider either, first, if you have an ordinance and it's ordinance of 1512, if you have an ordinance, let's enforce it. It's kind of like when I was at high school. I can remember Mike gave us certain rules. And he said, okay, no gum chewing in class. So me being the kind of guy I was, gum was not allowed. If you don't, as a student, don't like that rule, go get the rule changed, okay? Otherwise, enforce it. For me right now, let's either enforce it across the entire city, which frankly is gonna start hurting some businesses because there's many businesses that have signage that is not in compliance with the ordinance, okay? Either enforce it, modify it, or allow, you know, an exemption to those people that need the exemptions. Because right now, we're not, it's, it's not evident to me that that's being done. Gray Sales Covenant Church, I know somebody will probably be talking about things from a business side. Our business is to bring people to Christ. And frankly, when you drive down Highway 4, you probably won't even know Gray Sales Covenant Church is here, which is why we put our flags up. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you, John.
Well, I'm following up, but not as a representative of anyone except for myself as a citizen and just all the citizens in Angels Camp. I've provided all of you a copy of the letter. To the members of the Angels Camp City Council, I come before you with concerns for the city and more so for the businesses and nonprofits within Angels Camp. The current policy, Chapter 12.15.12, signs and billboards. For signage within the City of Angels Camp is cost prohibitive and discouraging for all businesses. It is a complete opposite tactic to bringing and encouraging business in Angels Camp. I'm asking the city council to change the policy to a no-cost permit to ensure professionally created signs are the correct size and the content of the signs are appropriate for the business, along with proper placement for wayfinding. Temporary signage for events or announcements should have a maximum display of 30 days. That's just my opinion. It's not, that's for council and planning to decide. No pornographic and/or hateful and/or discriminatory signage. I believe the city should be supportive of business that generates tax dollars and the desperately needed community services that are provided by nonprofits. Along with the tax dollars generated by businesses, let's acknowledge and support the nonprofits that supply our community with services that the city cannot provide. Food, clothing, household goods, pregnancy counseling, and family support are all provided by nonprofits in Angels Camp. The tax dollars generated and the free services provided to the city and its citizens should be the payment for the sign review and development. Angels Camp has special consideration to work with Caltrans along the Highway 4 and 49 corridor regarding any signage, and that is acknowledged. We all know that, that that's still, we can work in conjunction with them. What's not on your letter is a caveat that I am unchosen to read it. And I'd like to bring to, bring attention to the fact that complaint-driven code enforcement, which is what I have been told is how this code enforcement is done, lends itself to bias, favoritism, and downright discrimination. I'm asking the city council, I'm asking the City of Angels Camp, the Angels Camp City Council, and the Angels Camp Planning Commission to encourage and promote business and nonprofits that keep the city growing and thriving. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rose, is there anyone online?
Any public comment online?
Do we have anybody?
We have one person. No, there's no public comment.
Moving on to item number eight, consent items. Number A is approved draft minutes of April 1st, 2025. B is AP checks and treasures report from March. And C is the City of Angels Housing Element Annual Report. Does any member of the council want to pull any items?
I need to pull A, please.
Okay. Does any member of the public present want to pull any of the items?
I'll move to approve.
Wait, wait, wait. I have to ask the public online first.
Oh.
Any public, any members online want to pull an item from the consent? No.
Okay, so we'll take item...
I'll move to approve B and C. I'll second B and C.
Any other comments, comments from the public? Anyone online, Rose, with a comment regarding this item?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call.
Beehill.
Aye.
Scherrato.
Aye.
Schamonte.
Aye.
Monkotta.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving back to item A.
I wasn't here, so...
Yeah. I'll move to approve item A. Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Any discussion from the public? Online, Rose?
None online.
All right. Roll call.
Beehill.
Aye.
Scherrato.
I've seen.
Schamonte.
Aye.
Monkotta.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our action items. 9A, Amy, update on the park.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'm hoping this is the last time I'll have to update you on the park.
You always say that.
We were taking a net earlier today as to whether this would be on the agenda for next council meeting or not. I won't tell you what the net was. Status, Boyer has completed all the work under their contract. They're doing some very minor cleanup. On Wednesday, there will be a walkthrough of public work so that they know where all the switches are, where all the pipes are. We will be receiving as-built and we will be doing the punch list. Also wanted to bring up, confirm the opening date with you, as well as talk about picnic tables. First, I'll talk about the opening date. We had tentatively scheduled that for May the 17th and with a grand opening on May the 31st. And it was brought to my attention that should you want to open it earlier, what would that entail? And what that would entail is buying approximately $2,000 worth of fencing and posts so we could fence off, and by we, I mean our public works department, could fence off all of the hydro seeded area and would be able to get to that next week. And then we could open everything else to the public. The third item is about picnic tables. As you may recall, all picnic tables are at the museum because that's where the farmer's market is. We lease out the pavilion to people who sort of depend upon there being picnic tables there. So since taking them back from the farmer's market might not really work, as well as the fact that many of those are, they're bowed in the middle so that people cannot sleep on them, we were going to suggest that perhaps we order new tables, round ones, that people cannot sleep on. We did receive some monies towards our lighting in the park we had applied for around. And that frees up some of the general fund monies that we had allocated to the lighting. And surprise, surprise, it would cover the cost of purchasing nine new tables if the council would like us to pursue that. And if you could give us some direction, we'd love to do that. If we got the order in ASAP, it would be here in time for both the Valley Springs kids coming on perhaps May the 7th, as well as the fireman's pancake breakfast. They would not have to haul all of these tables over there and all of these chairs over there, back and forth. As well as, it would, they would be available for when we lease out. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Metal tables?
Metal.
Was that the...
That's plastic.
Yeah. The plastic on it?
Powder coated. They happen to be 30% off at the moment.
Is the, is the farmer's market gonna return to the park?
My indication is they will be staying over at the museum this season.
Okay.
And then return to the park.
There have been a lot of requests and a lot of noise made about possible shade structures and what they might cost. If there's extra money all of a sudden for tables that wasn't there for shade structures, how's that gonna be perceived?
That's an excellent question. And as I've mentioned before, basically what we'd like to do is live with the park for a season to find out where shade structures would be the most appropriate and provide the most benefit. Some of the items that shade structures were requested for simply cannot be engineered to include a shade structure. So there are some limited numbers of places where we can put shade structures. And we will be pursuing the grant for some shade structures.
So Amy, oh, by the way, I saw the sprinklers go on, by the way.
Yeah, I was, I was nervous about the sod because I was watching it die. And I was like, uh, but I had to go, I was out of town and I, but I was happy to see when I drove by today, the sprinklers were on.
Oh, so they are coming up?
Yeah.
Oh, I lost the whole day.
Yeah.
Talk about, you went over the fencing. Do you mind, so you said that if we open earlier...
So if we, in order to open, we would need to remove the metal fencing that goes around the whole park, which means people would be able to go on the seeded areas. Yeah. In order to prevent that, we would need to put in that orange fencing all around the sodded areas, which means you could still access everything in the park except the grass in the central part of the park. That would cost $2,000 worth of materials and the time from our public works guys.
Or four weeks.
To open up earlier than May 17.
And May 17th is what we talked about in terms of hydro seeding and allowing it the opportunity.
And then, then we would simply remove all the fencing, which now we could remove, actually, May 11th. We could actually remove it.
And that gives us enough time with the hydro seeding to have people on it by May 11?
I was told you could even start walking on it before four weeks, but the four weeks was what they recommended for minimum.
So Amy, during your discussions with the committee, was shade ever brought up? I mean, at the meetings I attended, that, it was kind of further along, so...
Yes.
Okay.
The committee opted to go put the money that we had into the equipment that was being provided for the kids in the playground and at the park as opposed to shade structures. Because you could always add shade structures later and try to raise money later, but that they wanted to be able to get the most bang for their buck out of actual equipment for the kids to play.
And I asked you earlier today, were you able to find the answer about the guarantee on the...
I was told that it was guaranteed so long as we did not heavily use it for the next four weeks.
Okay. Okay, so if it does not grow in areas, they'll come back and spray and don't we be responsible for that?
They didn't come right out and say that, but that was the indication, was that as so long as we treated it correctly, that they would make sure that it continued.
And ultimately, Boyer would be responsible because these folks were self-debtor, correct?
They were self-debtor, yes.
Okay. And the other thing that, so the council knows, that Chris, Pam and I have been talking about since during this period, if we give Chris a chance to spray the rock area where the walking trail is, and then, you know, not only for fire, and then it's too late to do a pre-emergent, but then Chris has money, or you're someplace, or you're... Chris has money in his budget to hire extra help to get the weeds down this year. But, you know, I would suggest that we allow Chris to move forward with that and assume on an annual basis if we have to shut the park down or cordon off that area when you spray with a pre-emergent next year, it would save us tons of money and really protect those folks and lessen the fire danger. So I'm hoping everyone is in agreement with that also. Let him go move forward and spray this year while it's closed, posting the signage that he needs to post, et cetera. I don't know, Chris, if you wanted to say anything or...
No, I just, you know, I'd like to, I would like to just get the opportunity to get ahead of it before it becomes a problem or before it becomes a complaint. So, you know, that means jumping on it as soon as possible. I mean, we're already past the point where I could do a pre-emergent, so it's just basically I gotta spray it, get it dead, and then weed it, and then it shouldn't be a problem for the rest of the summer. Moving into next weed season, I would like to do a pre-emergent on it, so it doesn't grow.
And I, yeah, and we're gonna use, let, use your discretion about when you close it, how you close it, and thank you. Any members from the, well, you can stay there, because maybe they have a question.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about, I wanted to talk about the snow fencing for the fencing off of the seeded area. So if we were to go ahead and do that so that we, the kids would have access to the hard courts and the playground and what have you, can we, do we have a place to store that fencing and can we use it for future things that we might need?
I did not get the expensive kind. I got the kind that's likely to wear out.
Okay.
No, it's, it's just the lower grade. You can get a moderate or higher grade that's more expensive, but I went for the least expensive because it was only gonna be used for four weeks.
Okay. My concern is that, you know, it's supposed to be open in November, then we moved it, and now then it was supposed to be April 2nd, and now we're moving it again. We're getting into the hot season. It gets hot in May, and then we're gonna be June, July, August. I would like to see us open it. I would like to see the, the things that can be opened, opened now so that we can start getting kids on the playground to enjoy it before it gets to be 108 degrees outside, which is gonna be here before we know it as well. Let's get some time in on it. That's where I'm sitting. So when I saw this on the agenda, I was, I was disappointed that we were pushing it to May 17th. And I understand with the hydro seeding and then grand opening May 31st, and that's fair weekend. So kids aren't even gonna, they're gonna be out at fair. I don't know. I just, that's where I'm sitting at is I'd like to see us move forward with the fencing and get some of this open.
So we talked about this actually at the last meeting that you weren't at, and that's where we decided on that, May 17th date. I am of the opinion that if May 11th is the earliest for the hydro seeding, I know it's not the popular opinion, but I think that keeping it closed the way that it is, allowing everyone the opportunity, Chris, whatever you gotta do. I think that if we stick, I would like to see us stick with that date. May 11th is a Sunday. So maybe, actually, May 12th, right, Monday. But I think it's also extremely important that we get that message online so everyone knows what's going on and what that holds.
Yeah, there's a lot of chatter on Facebook.
So I am of the opinion that we keep it closed until that May 12th, I suppose I'll say. And then we could do a grand opening earlier. I know we talked about doing a soft opening and then a grand opening. I still think that's very important. But like I said, I think people need to know why we're keeping it closed and, and keep it closed until we're really ready to go. We've already spent so much time, we've spent so much money. I know it's, it's like that ice cream cone of just sitting right there and you wanna take a bite, but just a little bit longer.
I'm still standing on, I would like it open.
Val?
How much of the fence is still wide early?
Two grand.
Two grand. So I'm sticking to where I was last time of, I want the grass because I, like I mentioned, kids are gonna hop the fence. And then, like, you talk to the company and they will warranty what was not messed up. And so I'm on, I really want it open. Don't take this the wrong way. I want it open as soon as possible. But I do want, I'm on the May 12th or whatever, whatever that date is where we can safely run and skip and roll on the grass, that's where I'm, I have all this.
Is the Murphy's Park open fully now? Is their hydro seeding done? Because I know they had it fenced off and those kids got to use their park while it was fenced off.
Their playground's in a totally different spot.
And it wasn't... They just have to walk on paths, but yeah.
It wasn't last week. I only know that because one of our office people put their, their child, I haven't been out there.
Scott?
I'm for buying the tables and putting up the fence and getting kids out there as soon as possible because I don't think you can do a lot of harm with dirt.
We don't want it to become dirt, though.
I gotta go back. I'm good for the tables. And you said, did it just cover it or is there actually some monies that will be left?
There would be a lot.
I'm all for the tables as well. Let's take this order.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I, like, let me, I, you know, I have, I hear what everyone is saying, my, my local council members, and I appreciate their opinions. Well, you know, one of the things that we're not taking into consideration, in order for that grass to have grown, it would have had it been sprayed four weeks ago. And four weeks ago, we were in the middle of rainstorms. So I think the opening was always depended on the park being finished. You know, we kept saying that parks gonna be, the construction of the park is done, but it would have been nearly impossible for them to have sprayed this park four weeks ago, the grass. So, you know, part of me understands the frustration of the public. The other part of me understands that in a construction project, weather permitting, things can happen. And so, you know, I'm gonna sit on the fence and kind of swing either way. How does, the public is here. How do you guys feel? John? So let me go, Rose.
Part of my background is I used to work as a landscaper in way back, in way back days. And my opinion is when you get a project like this started, you let it come to fruition. If you open that park now, the, you're gonna have some problems. I guarantee that the, the grass that you've seeded or the spray that you've done, the hydro seed, you're gonna have issues with that because they will, kids will not, at least my kids, kids I taught, would not worry about fence. They're gonna go where they wanna go. I think you should put the tables in. I think you should hold off your, your opening to the planned date. And actually, 17th of May would've been where I would go, not the 12th. Give that time to actually build up. That's my opinion.
I actually own the landscape business. Just want to say that. And hydro seeding's pretty sturdy, but I don't think that the kids are gonna push down the fences as soon as possible, but...
Veronica?
It's kind of, I'm laughing because I'm just revisiting all the social media.
I know.
I know.
Stuff.
I always read and read, and then I chime in and try to give some...
Thank you for all that you do. I really have seen the praises of the council and the city in regards to our park. And I, you're right, there was, there were storms and you couldn't hydro seed. And the fencing, you know, that's a great idea, but we've all had kids. And I will tell you that every kid that I know, even all the good ones, will jump over that fence. And if it's the lesser, you know, the lower grade fence, it's probably gonna be pretty flimsy and so it's going to be hardcore damage. If the guarantee for, you know, redoing patches that don't grow for any reason, if they, if it hasn't been maintained appropriately, it's like, oh, well then, I don't wanna see a brand new park with big old patches of dirt. I love the idea of the round tables because that's awesome.
A season to determine where the shade structures need, are needed, I think is a smart thing. That's just my opinion, and May 12th is not that far away. We're on the 15th right now. I mean, again, like Isabel said, you know, it's like the, the ice cream. Yeah, it looks good, but you know, it's like, yeah. Kids are still playing outside, there's not, you know, on that equipment.
Right.
All right, two cents worth. All right, just two cents.
You have to state your name, though, first.
State your name. Aisha Williamson. One thing that wasn't mentioned, and I, I echo the other public comment. The Stroptimus put on a beautiful children's parade to kick off the fair on the 15th of May. It is a children's parade. The concentration of kiddos, if the park isn't quite ready, it's a lot of impact, plus everybody with the parade, the boats, the floats, the cars, everything that comes down to the park. Waiting maybe a couple more days and lessening that concentration of the impact would, I mean, it's a beautiful investment. You've all put a lot of time and energy and effort into it, and as the other public comments have been, we've waited long enough, let's let it be what it's supposed to be for everybody, so it lasts the whole summer. If we suddenly have this gorgeous parade, then it also puts a terrible shadow on the Stroptimus for all of their hard work to help us kick off the fair, and I just think that should be considered, that you suddenly invite in kids from basically the whole county and sometimes outside of it, and, oh, by the way, the park's open, and we literally just opened it, it could really actually cause a lot of damage.
Rose?
Any online comments on the park?
So that's, May 15th is the parade?
It is.
Okay, so I just want us to say one more thing, and I, I wanna compliment and congratulate our council. You know, we, we went through this process of arm wrestling, all the change orders, because it was design-built, and Amy, you did a great job navigating all that. But I have to tell you, as a councilman, I, I appreciate, a council person, excuse me. I think the best good money was re-oiling that, have you guys seen that? It was for $20,000. I mean, it, it's just like, wow! I mean, the wow factor of just having that, that, just, you know, the, all with one color and stuff. So, thanks, guys, for supporting that, because it made a big difference. And I know you were at that meeting, Veronica, and, and, you know, I mean, thank you for sharing your comment also. Just what the wow factor was, was amazing.
So I have one more question for you. On the park bench, where you do the new ones, I'm all for it, I think it's great. And I will throw out that this was a long process, but moving the farmer's market to the museum, I think was pretty amazing, too. At least, I've talked about it, you know, Marvin, different things, a few different conversations I've had, and, and just from what I've seen, people went to museums, they saw things they hadn't seen in years, so I think it was a good thing, and so my question is, are we gonna leave those, since we have new ones at the, brand new park, are we gonna leave some of those there, if Martin would like a couple of them, for people to sit at and that type of thing, or are we gonna bring them all back down to the park or something? I'm, I'm just...
I would not recommend bringing them back to the park. You might want to sell them as surplus or see what...
Or see if Martin wants one, or, or the Triumph Parks, or, I'm just saying, if, these ones are worse, or Gateway, or we can, okay, that's...
We wouldn't really have, yeah.
Wouldn't have a room, that's what I mean, okay, so that's, that was my question. Perfect, thank you.
Any other, so it's, do we need to do roll call, a motion about when we're gonna open the park?
Sounds like they want to wait. And I, I just don't know if we're waiting to the 11th or the 17th? Or the 31st?
The 12th or the, the 17th, we would...
There are so many dates that have been out, I thought it was May 11th. Where?
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a...
Maybe it's neither May 11th with the two options.
Right, as Isabel currently pointed out, May 11th is a Sunday, so we would wait till the 12th, which is a Monday.
Where, quick question, which it seems like you would know the answer, where do they stage? I know before it was at the park, but where has it been since?
They will be staging at the park.
So they are still gonna stage at the park?
We are going to move the metal fencing.
Okay.
So that they can stage at the park.
Might, might move it out or move it back?
Move it so that they can use the newly oiled paint line.
Last year, they literally staged on Highway 4 on the shoulder.
Right, they moved it up last, yeah. It was a little precarious.
But if we open it on the 12th, the fencing goes away, or what?
Right, if we open it on the 12th, then it's, it's moved. But one way or another, they can stage there.
Which is good. Thank you, and thanks again for all that you've done, and at some point, when we start to plan, it'd be very important to send those invitations out to all the key folks that helped us design this and were a part of it. Thank you. And let's just hope on Facebook that people understand the rationale for why we're doing it. You know, while it is important to move forward, we're also trying to be good stewards of our dollars, too.
So let me throw this back out. We're opening on the 12th, correct?
That was not determined.
I'm, I'm, I'm bringing it back, I'm, I'm yes on benches, and I'm yes on the 12th.
Okay, let's make it the 12th, then.
In consideration of the parade, so it'll be open when the kids come from other parts of the county, and they'll see our beautiful park, and it's open? And we're not worried about damage?
Nope, let's roll.
Let's go for it.
For past our warranty.
So it's not going to be a reading for next time? And we, we will not put this back on the, the next time unless you guys are dying to hear about it again.
Not unless something pops up that you...
We will be, have to have another discussion on it.
And can we make sure to put a Facebook post out, so what's going on, why we're holding off, and when that date will be? Thank you.
Yeah, and just, it does look amazing, and it's, I'm super excited about it, and I think it's the best part in Calabria.
Well, it's gotta be.
I can't wait for the farmer's market to come back, too. I'm not, I'm just, I, I think it's, it's a pretty nice thing.
And ADA-wise, I will tell you, it will be easier for people to move around there. That was the only complaint I ever heard.
Right, that's the only, that's, yeah.
Otherwise, everybody loved it at the museum.
Can I make a comment real quick about the tables?
Sure.
Just something to consider is most parks' tables are mounted in the ground.
And bolted?
So, yeah, bolted in the ground, so they can't be moved around. So just a consideration, when we get these tables and how we're gonna secure them, so people aren't picking them up, stacking them, doing silly, you know, a big group comes, and they want to put them all together or whatever, and then somebody's gotta go back behind them and move them around. More kids disturbing them, so...
I just assume they're being bolted down.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Because the ones at Murphy's, those big wooden ones and metal, those have been disappearing. They've had two.
Yeah, ours were not bolted down before, and people like to rearrange when they use the pavilion for the various uses that you might have. We actually even looked at concrete ones, which you couldn't move, and basically, Public Works guys said, yeah, no, we don't want those, because we do have to move them.
Depending on the quality of the benches that we get, too, will determine if anybody decides they want them if they're...
They're heavy enough.
Well, the benches, the benches will be...
If they're not bolted down.
We could always get a way to bolt these down, I mean, but they don't come that way.
But the benches are...
Public Works to determine.
Yes.
Yeah, how's that?
I'm saying what?
Public Works to determine.
There we go. We'll put it on them.
Thanks, honey.
You're welcome.
Okay, so grand opening's still May 31st, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Veronica?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may. Use the mic.
It's hard to describe official.
Yes.
According to what Scott was mentioning, Chief Ellis, aren't, am I mistaken, but weren't we gonna have security cameras down at the park and lighting?
Sweet, I'll talk to Scott.
It's like...
Haven't you guys started explaining yet?
Yeah, just, you know...
Security cameras, we don't have any, there's no budget for that currently. I, I did put in for a grant through the Homeland Security Grant for a camera, but that's yet to be known whether we'll get it, and that wouldn't be something that would be installed even for at least another year or so, based on the rotation and how the grants work. So unless the city decides they want to purchase cameras and, you know, do it on that end, that's not something I'm per view right now.
Gotcha.
Benches would be too old to steal, like tables are too old to steal by now.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Are you gonna stand up there?
She's gotta go again. You gotta minimize V, though.
Okay, we're moving on to item 9B. Wage the first reading by substitution of the title and reduce ordinance number 543 and ordinance for the City of Angels approving a new chapter 15.30, grading, drainage, and erosion control for the City of Angels Municipal Code and adopting resolution number 25-18, approving the update of the city's design standards to add a new chapter 19 with standards for implementing the grading, drainage, and erosion control provision. Amy Augustine?
Here and council members, I won't go through all the gory details about how we got here, but basically, our multi-hazard, jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan was adopted and identified, identifies the need to update all of our emergency response and hazard codes, which we did. We recently completed, it included about a year, year and a half of online meetings that included city council members, planning commissioner member, fire chief, fire marshal, police chief, city engineer, city planner, public works, city administrator, and two public workshops held December 12th, 2024, and January 16th, 2025. We're bringing this to you in parts. We're starting with the grading, drainage, and erosion control, and then you will see flood, then you will see fire, and then you will see the emergency response. The planning commission did consider this at their meeting and did recommend approval as presented. We made one minor, no, yes, we made one minor change that was addressed in your staff report. Basically, what this does is it addresses grading period. We have nothing in our code that addresses drainage, never have. Our standards, our development standards do not address grading, drainage, or erosion control. So we are putting this in here so it's predictable, conforms with state standards that you would have to conform with for water quality protection, as well as keeping soils on your own site, not having them go dashing off and onto adjacent parcels. It also addresses anticipatory grading, so that you don't go in and grade in anticipation of submitting an application. It basically warns you upfront, don't go in there and grade first, and then ask what you can do if you're planning a building permit later, and talk to us first. Grading is not required for less than 50 cubic yards. I had previously shown you some slides which showed some really large containers, that was 50 cubic yards, so you have my...
Each one or all three together?
It was, each one was 50 cubic yards.
Okay.
So that's sort of a big one. Geotechnical, geological soil investigations, fire breaks, driveways, roadways with no significant grade changes, those are all exempt also. Really, what you get into when you do trigger an actual grading permit that you have to do, those are generally when you move a lot of dirt, such as removing a habitat for humanity, that did require a grading permit. Or if you're getting near a waterway. So that's basically, if you have to do a creek crossing, what have you, you will, you will end up with that. If you want to do it within a flood zone, that also will do it, trigger a grading permit. So that was really all I had, other than to remind you that there's two parts to this. One is the resolution, which adopts standards that go in our code, not, are not in our code. They're easier to change when they're done by resolution. We've had design standards since 2010, and this basically just adds in design standards, which, yes, we basically borrowed from Calabria's county, who in turn borrowed from other counties. And then the ordinance, which we'll be bringing back to you on May the 6th for a second reading, would then put that in our ordinance code. Be happy to answer any questions.
So I, I have a, thank you, this is very informative. I didn't realize why so much concrete was being poured for the new 76 station until I read this. I didn't realize that was a mandate to have concrete aprons, and they had to extend so far past. I, I have a couple of questions about when you use borrowed material. Is testing required on that borrowed material, no matter how much you bring in? Because it does talk about fill specifications, but I was just curious about, does that borrowed material have to go through any kind of testing?
That has been my, you have to know where it came from, the origin of it, before you can bring it in. I'm looking over at Michael to see if he knows anything more about borrowed material. I have been told, just in, just experience-wise, when people do bring in material from outside, you have to know where it came from. As well as, you have to have approval for when you take stuff off-site, for when you take it off. I'm guessing that doesn't actually answer your question.
It, it does sort of, kind of. And my, my next question is, when, when a project is exempt, do we look at the impact that, that exemption may have created on the neighboring houses with respect to water and things like that? Michael, when you, when you go out and somebody's building a house and they've moved less than 50 cubic feet of, of dirt, but they kind of changed the demography with the flow and stuff, do you kind of address that with the homeowner, or does that have to happen?
Typically, with the best managed practices, they have to install waddles or silt fence or something like that. Until it reseeds itself. So typically, after the job's over, until, you know, the earth is stable again. So typically, typically, it's a full season. You know, you would be, you know, a full season again after the setup, so you would have all your waddles in place, and you would have all your silt fencing in place. Most of the time, it's, you know, nobody leaves tiles, you know what I mean, it's spread out evenly, and then waddled to make sure there's no runoff. It's part of the stormwater practices.
And then, Michael, do you also kind of, do you look at, or the drainage is gonna leave this piece of property and how it's gonna impact its neighbors?
I do.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, even when there's not a grading permit, any place that you, there's always grading, no matter what you're doing, there's always some kind of grading. But if it's under the 50 yards, we just look at where it's going, and, you know, if there's swales or however it's put together. Typically, I like to see that stuff on the plans, and we do get a little bit more of it on the plans now. And with the grading permit and having, you know, some of these, the new ordinance and everything else, and, you know, we'll actually be able to see more of it, because now there's someplace I can point to, to, you know, have a full page of best managed practices.
And then, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be monopolizing this, but I, I had an experience. And then, it's a neighbor, a homeowner builds a dish-in or builds a house, and six months, eight months down the road, you know, during a storm, you know, the person's basement is flooded due to this new construction. Would they come to the city? Would they come to you, or try to address it with the...
That, that's gonna all depend. That, that's just gonna depend.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I, I have been in cases like that, and a lot of times, you know, it's hard to say where that water's coming from. You know, water is gonna go downhill, we all know that. So if you're above somebody, whether there's a house there or not, you know what I mean, where you're getting flooded before, so really, it turns into a civil matter.
Okay, okay.
And, and Mr. Mayor, there's also always easements and the cut and fill slopes, you, you still have to stay within your parcel boundary. So when you're moving dirt, you got a plan for that, too. So that if it's gonna slope down now, you've still got to stay in your parcel boundary. You can't go over it on the neighbor, so there's other guidelines included.
And then I just have one more, then. You guys, I will open it up. The CQA, the Construction Quality Assurance, are those required for exempt projects also, or just for bigger projects? You know, those assurances that, the plan that was...
I, I've never seen one on an exempt project.
Okay, okay.
BNP's, however, would always want to see best management practices.
Thank you, that, except I'm like, thank you for this. And as we talked on this committee, this, you're gonna try, you guys are gonna try to hand this stuff out, correct? To potential, when, when someone's coming in for a permit, they're, and you're gonna do construction, they're gonna get all the code sections that are relevant to their project.
That is a huge part of this, because right now, when somebody comes in and asks if they need a grading permit or not, our answer to their question is, I don't know. And now we can answer that question. We actually have a, a number, we actually have standards. They can predict exactly what it is we're gonna ask and what they're gonna have to include in their plans.
Thank you. Thank you for the work on this. Any other council members' questions?
Yeah, have there been any problems with home building with grading in the past in the city?
No, because those are usually exempt.
Usually. Is there a way to make home building exempt on, on developed lots, period? I, I'm really against adding yet more cost, more regulation to building single-family homes, because Angels Camp is already way over the top. So I won't support this if there's a situation where it's gonna cost a residential builder on an already developed lot, it's gonna cost them more time, more money, more aggravation.
So I'm gonna answer your question as honestly as I can. I've never run into a single-family residence that triggered a grading... I've never run into a single-family residence that triggered a grading permit, and the only way it would trigger under this is if it required more than 50 cubic yards of moving dirt. I can't think of a lot.
In that case, since there's not been an issue in the past, let's exempt single-family homes. Like I said, already developed, where they're developed down to their smallest parcel especially.
Then they should not need.
And they shouldn't, and so we wouldn't probably put an exemption in here for that, so at least we can look after the homeowners.
I would be happy to, before the second reading, confirm with our engineer his experiences to make sure that he doesn't have an experience like that. But again, if you had to lock the size of something in Habitat for Humanity, and they wanted to move more than 50 cubic yards of dirt, I think we would want a grading permit.
On something like that, we have a number of parcels involved at once. But I'm thinking of a home in Greenhorn Creek, for example, it's on a hillside, and they want to dig into the hillside, and I know they have been in the past. There haven't been issues, I don't know how many feet or yards of everything moved, but my point is, is that to, I wouldn't want to see them have to get a grading permit.
I can, I can add something. I'm not sure how close we can to the county of Calaveras, but county of Calaveras, you're allowed to move 200 cubic yards with a home, with a home build permit. So it's not just the 50, you're allowed to move 200 yards. So that's how they get around that. It's not an exemption, you know, anything over 200 cubic yards.
They just made it so massive.
And.
So why on earth?
Well, actually 200, or 200 cubic yards really isn't a lot, you know, that much.
That's my point. So why are we being even tighter than the county then?
Because we actually did use the county's code, but we approached it in a way that I did not go into here, which is there are tiers, and there's like a grading permit, where you just say how much you're moving, and we don't ask you anything else other than that, and that is it. That's a tier one. Tier two, you actually have to do studies, and that goes up as you move more and more dirt. The 50 cubic yard one, if you go over that, it's, we basically only ask you how much dirt you're moving, period. And we can do that in conjunction with issuing a building permit for a house, so.
So you're saying there's no additional cost?
You would be able to cover that under your single-family residence building permit. But I will check with our engineer and at our second reading, see if we can incorporate the exemption that you are asking about, or if there needs to be any sideboards to that if we add that exemption.
Okay, so I'm not sure when a house is being built and they start grading, I'm not sure they know how much dirt they're going to move until they kind of get in there and just do it. Some of these guys are pretty good with those tractors, and they crank stuff out pretty fast, but I don't know. When I built my house, I had no idea how much dirt we moved, I had no idea. So I don't apply for a permit, I would say, oh, I don't know.
We will, we will check on that and report back in the next.
Now I'm confused, what do we, but there is no additional charge for the grading permit? That's incorporated in?
No, for a single-family residence, there is not an additional charge for a grading permit. However, for like Habitat for Humanity, there is a charge for that. We're moving that much.
Because the amount of dirt they're moving.
Yes, and it's also for a subdivision.
So I'm trying to exempt properties that are down to their final development already. Habitat, they're putting 100 units on there, so that's that. But when they start with each lot in Habitat, I mean, they're small enough, they never have a problem. But my point is, once you're, once you're down to rebuilding one house on a lot, that shouldn't be.
And that's, you're saying that's exempt though, right?
No, he wants it spelled out that it's exempt no matter how much dirt you are moving.
And in no case, I want it more strict than the county, in no case. I don't want to do that on anything.
And again, I want to look into this because we caught each county. So I need to find out where that discrepancy is between the 50 and the 200 that Michael mentioned.
Caroline, any other questions or comments? Isabel?
No.
And we do need a motion on the resolution.
I was going to say, because we're waiving the first reading and then.
For the ordinance, yeah.
Alvin, any questions?
No.
Any questions from the public present?
I don't have a question, however, as a homeowner, seeing construction and hearing how much it costs before you even touch the dirt in the City of Angels Camp, I am 100% in favor of an exemption across the board for individual home building. I think it is ridiculous how much it costs. There are people that will not build in Angels Camp. They will go elsewhere once they find out how much it costs to build here. It's time for the city to embrace its citizens and be on their side. So an exemption sounds perfect.
Thank you. Anyone online?
Yes, but not.
Okay. So we, motion for the resolution? Are you going to make it on this?
So adopting a resolution 25-18, right, yes.
All second to motion?
Was it motion to adopt it?
Yes, of 25-18.
Okay, and then Isabel, second?
Yep.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the council? Any discussion from the public present or online? Rose?
Bee Hill?
No.
Sharada?
Aye.
Shemante?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 9C, approve, propose changes to capital asset policy. Michelle?
Thank you. So I'm bringing forward to you an update to our capital assets policy. Currently, any item that we purchase over 5,000, we capitalize and depreciate, which is a very low amount for the volume that we have. So in two reasons to update the policy. Some standards have changed with GASB and with GFPA that we now need to account for leases, which we're doing, and also for subscription-based technology. So a lot of times when you purchase software, it was a purchase, it was over the threshold, it would get capitalized. Now, a lot of people are going to this posted leasing, and they want to make sure that that's not falling through the cracks of your audit and that you're properly accounting for it. And so there were some changes, so we needed to update our, our policy to talk about those things. But the big thing we want to look at is increasing that threshold. So now, instead of looking at anything that's $5,000 or more, we're proposing $20,000 or more. It did run the number past our auditors, just to say, hey, what do you think about this? They thought that was a great number for our size and what we have. So going back, everything that you've already capitalized, you leave and you run through your life of depreciation. So it could be three years, five years, 10 years. You could have infrastructure that's 40 years on the books. So that is going to remain the same. But going forward, starting our current fiscal year, anything that we purchase over $20,000 will be capitalized. So it also saves a lot at year-end when you're having to go through and capitalize and run depreciation. We do it once a year. Also, as we're switching and moving to Accupund, our new accounting software, we have a capital assets module, where right now it's done in Excel manually. And so when we set that up for year-end, we can already put in the new threshold, and it would go ahead and grab what I need and run that through there going forward. So it'll be a change that occurs in this fiscal year going forward.
Any questions from council?
Michelle, I understand that in the, when you have to pay taxes, the importance in writing off something now versus capitalizing it and depreciation and such. Can you explain the significance of this in a, in the city setting?
In the city, because we don't pay taxes.
You don't pay taxes, so it's for reporting, but what kind of things does this make easier versus?
In terms of a larger dollar amount, or just in total having the policy? Or for a nonprofit government agency?
There's no fiscal difference at all in what we're doing.
No, there's a benefit, so when you're a for-profit, you're able to spread that cost so it doesn't hit your revenue and expense, or you don't show the full expense. You're only showing one tenth of it if it's over 10 years, helps. For the city, we have to do it because GAAP tells us we have to do it. It's a rule. And it does get put into your financial statements, and they have the depreciation standards mainly. It's just, it's a rule, and we don't fall exempt from that rule.
Thank you. Trying to get those all hours spent, handing stuff out in a manner.
Right. And, you know, you have, it's a nice listing of all your assets, and, you know, at least you have the high value ones, insurance purposes, you share your list. Hopefully, there's some more of your assets that fall in with that $20,000 you're still sharing with your insurance. But there's some other purposes that, it's good for the financial statement reader, they have an understanding of what the city owns and puts in value, so.
And they actually stay on until we surplus it then?
They do. And that's been a big thing with GFPA. I attended the CSM, oh, it's the Municipality's Finance Officers Conference, and that was a big topic, because what they feel like a lot of government entities do is they keep things on the books too long. And they said, we really need to start looking at putting a life of an asset that's going to be the true life. Like, don't just use your, oh, it's a piece of furniture, so we're going to save five years, 10 years, because cities aren't replacing it that way. We have vehicles that are extremely old, that are past their useful life. They said, get them off, you know, get them off your reserve, sign it, where you, it's really what you're realistic. So that's something that we're going to be looking at also as we go forward, is assigning a better life to them so that it does last the life of the asset. And putting into place a rotation schedule. So that we get rid of these old assets, and we plan for it, and we set aside money every year for that, so then it doesn't hit you all that you have a reserve and used to pay.
For the all the permits, all the city, all new vehicles at the same time.
Yes.
You don't get four vehicles in one year.
Yes.
Thank you for your work on this.
You're welcome.
And then I think what you, what was mentioned in your, in the staff report, which you didn't mention, if you went and bought $20,000 worth of computers, if the total price of the individual units collectively, then you would add.
We would capitalize that. So say you opened up a new building and you bought all the office furniture, even though those individual items might be 5,000, 1,000, you look at that total cost to put that asset in place, so we can capitalize that total cost. And we had conversations about this at the conference, where then going forward, if you had to replace something, like say you purchased a bunch of laptops, and so then over $20,000, you've capitalized that group of laptops, but then on an as-needed basis, one gets stolen or something happens to it, don't go through the mess of taking it off of your depreciation. You just expense the cost going forward, because it's just one item. You keep the full amount on your depreciation. So there was a lot of good conversation on how to handle that and how to group things so that you capture. Because it's all about, like, when you buy a police vehicle, it's not just the cost of vehicle, you've got to get it parked, you've got to get radios put in, you've got to put, you know, all of the things, there's other costs. You need to really capitalize that to your cost to depreciate. So we will also, we've been doing that since I've been here, but it's now documented and going forward, we'll keep the same practice.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And so is there, we need to approve the new policy, correct? Is there a motion to approve the new policy?
So a public comment?
Well, a public comment first, I'm sorry. Any public, anyone online?
No.
I'll vote that we approve the proposed changes.
All second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Any public, anyone online? Rose?
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Shemante?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number. Thank you, Michelle. Moving on to item 10, Firewise USA Information. Chief? Do we want to take a short break? Are we good?
No, we're good.
Okay, thank you, Rose.
You're saying hurry up, Rose. Well, good evening, mayor, city council, city administrator, staff. I've been asked to do a little presentation on information about the Firewise program. Included in your guys' package, you should have about five to seven pages. That really sort of tells you about the program. I've also brought two people here that have real experience with the Firewise program. So I've got Deputy Chief John Parks, who also runs the Red Heart Fire Tech program, and Michael Clark, our fire inspector, the co-enforcing person. They both have experience with Firewise neighborhoods and communities. So they can, they're more of an expert potentially on actually doing it. I do want to say that it's really about making your community as safe as possible when it comes to fire, and trying to find a neighborhood, and work together to make that the safest possible for any kind of wildfire. I do want to say that this is something that we do bring up to residents on a regular basis when they call. Like, sometimes the insurance company calls, and they need to get a little fire report on how, see if their house is and stuff like that. We always talk about the Firewise program, this has been going on for a while. I do want to say that this program has gained a lot of traction in Angels Camp. Over the last 30 days, there are three communities that I'm aware of that are actively pursuing the Firewise program. And it includes about 680 dwellings. So they've already set up their board director, or the board, they've already talked to residents. They've already talked to the National Fire Protection Agency. They've already talked to the state representative for RA, which is Cal Fire, and it's a gentleman in Fresno. They've completed their online application, and they're moving forward. So that's something that's really pretty impressive to get potentially 680 homes already signed up for that. And the program itself is really driven by the neighborhood or the community. They have to want to do it. I'm not sure how much you've looked at, I don't want to go through the whole presentation of the stuff that maybe you've already seen. But then they work together as a community to make it as fire-safe as possible. And they work on stuff as, like, defensible space for each one of your areas. The reward for the community, for us, is obviously fire safety, but there is a perk potentially for the residents, that if you get fully accredited, or when they come out and do their final evaluation, you can have homes that get a break on their insurance. And so that's the big plus, that's why you're seeing a lot of people, especially in California right now. And there's numerous communities in the state, there's a few up here too. So both these gentlemen have experience in that, and I'll be glad to go through as much as you want, based on what information that you've already seen. The gist of it is, a neighborhood wants to do the program, they get a board together, they start working together, then they have to donate time or pay money towards the program. Most of them donate time like an hour a year, an hour, yeah, it's really, it's really low what they have to do. You can start with as little as a community with eight homes, and you can go all the way up to 2,500 homes. It'd be something that I think we should support here always. And with the goal, if we did get 680 started, we should be pushing maybe to try to get the city completely. And that would be a real good marketing tool for the city as well, to have a Firewise city. I've seen some of those in certain places in California, drive in big banners or marquees that say, you know, we're proud to be a Firewise city. So if you have specific questions, I'll be glad to do that, or I can go through more some of the stuff that I sent. I think it's about seven pages of information, it's real basic, whatever you guys want. And these gentlemen, both of them would be more than willing to talk to you about their experiences with Firewise in Calaveras County.
I want to thank you, John, and also Caroline, thank you for bringing it to our attention. You know, I did research, there are, I think, currently three or four communities that have moved in that direction. But the response that you received in our small community is overwhelming. You know, it is amazing. And, you know, what I was worried about when you and I talked is that this is, typically it's an HOA, prompted, homeowners association. But it sounds like you have groups of communities merging together to see the goods, the sense that this makes for them, so.
Yeah, it's, I mean, people are invigorated, and I went out and met with them and talked with them and stuff. It's been really amazing what they wanted to do. with them and stuff, it's been really amazing what they wanted to do and as soon as we get them on track, they're just, I mean, I can't believe that really within 30 days of meeting with two of the members, I mean, tomorrow their application goes in.
Wow.
So it's pretty amazing and we will always support them. There will be times when we're going to go out, we might be required by CalFire to ask our department to go out and do an evaluation and give recommendations and give our feedback back to them. But I just think that, I think it's an amazing thing, I can't believe how much it's grown.
And it's good common sense stuff, I mean it.
It is.
It is. It's just.
And in like Habitat for Humanity, you know, when they get started, I think that would be a great place to get that done really quick, you know, and then we get like Selton Park over here, it'd be awesome.
Um, thank you, Chief, for doing this, I really appreciate it. And I'm so excited that 680 homes are already on, like getting involved in this. So what do you see as some of the major stumbling blocks for us as a city trying to obtain Firewise as a city? I mean, because we have rural and homes kind of mixed in with each other.
Well.
You know, I just wonder what would, what are.
There'll be certain areas that are probably going to be difficult to do and I can probably let either one of these gentlemen speak about it, but you know, some of the homes on the west side of 49 over here that are super tight on hillsides, for some of the clearance that they like to see, it's going to be difficult. And they look at what they call ember casting, where embers go from one house to another house or half a mile away. Those might be tough, but I still think we can clean those up if we have people that are willing to do it. We want to deal with there. I don't mind going and doing it, you know, a couple hours a day, if I need to go out and help our community be safer. And same thing for the staff here, you know, we'll probably set something up where there'd be a template to go out and look at a house and evaluate, you know, do they have screens on their vents so, you know, embers can't get in there, you know, do they have five feet backup stuff that's not fireproof or fire resistant and stuff like that. Trim your trees up a little bit to prevent ember cast, stuff like that, you know, homes and where their trees are going over other properties, you know, that's the kind of thing that when Firewise does the evaluation, those kind of things have to be handled. So I don't think it's a stumbling block, I just think we have, we'll do the best we can to try to get as many homes as we can and I, I am just amazed when I got to know that they got 680 people already ready to go. I was like, or 680 dwellings. It really blew my mind, you know, so. But these gentlemen have lots of experience, if there's a question.
I've got, I've got a specific question.
Sure.
Are these communities, is it by house or parcel? For example, in Greenhorn Creek, you might have a house and then two parcels that are wood studded and then another house and they want to get eight houses all together. Do those parcels inside that home area have to be addressed as well? Because I know there's canopy issues.
Well, I think it has to, to qualify, I think it has to be a dwelling, right? I think that's how it's worded, a dwelling, so a vacant lot, maybe, maybe that doesn't qualify for that. But we want to clean, if there's a vacant lot that has debris on it or down trees and stuff like that, we want to work with the LOD or whatever to clean some of that stuff. I know there's been a lot of work over in Greenhorn.
Yeah.
There's a few things to clean up, but.
Yeah, as it talks about the canopy, like oak trees, they have to have a certain amount of space between each oak tree.
Correct.
And if you go on most of those lots, there's no space in them.
Yeah, it's going to be difficult and I know exactly who you're talking about. And some of that stuff, you might not be able to get everything, but you get as much as you can, still be, still be a Firewise community, but you might not, certain parts might not get the full. Yeah, go ahead, John.
Hi. As Chief said, John Parks, I was a former Fire Marshal for the county and am now the current Fire Marshal for Copper Rapids as well, was working for Altville. So a couple things is that the canopies are a problem, but the, the main point of Firewise is the 100 feet around the home. That's really what they're looking at, is to maintain that property when the fire does come through, that we don't add that fuel to something that's already coming up to your home. And so it's really about that and then there's a myth about this that we have to have all 680 of these homes dialed in with exactly what they need for a 4291 fire code, BCR 4291, and that's not necessarily true. The Firewise program is really designed to make people aware in your community, bring them together to commit their hour per year, per household, and to have an awareness about it and to create escape plans when the fire does come. So it's not really that the CalFire, anybody's going to come in and look to make sure that all 680 of these homes are, you know, done and ready to go, they just want to know they have an eight-member board, up to 2,500 homes per Firewise program, and that they're doing something to mitigate the problems as we go on. And then year after year, they're going to, you know, the groups are going to get together and be able to mitigate these fire hazards. The, the, the canopies are a problem, there are some guidelines that CalFire has about distance and height of these canopies. It'd have to go into a whole different ballgame with CalFire and the way that they're doing land clearing and mastication on these, on these projects. You've seen up in Murphy's, I'm also one of the Murphy's, Vice President of Murphy's Fire Board, so we're working very, very diligently with CalFire on these fire breaks. Not so much of a problem right here, but you still do have some, you know, some of these wildland interfaces, the WUI interfaces that you're facing between downtown and the bigger properties, so.
And then within the communities that are trying to do this, you know, when the neighborhood's trying to do this and you have, you know, some holdouts that don't, either don't want to, or in some cases it might cost, you know, $10,000, $15,000 to do all the tree work that's necessary around certain houses and they're saying, you know, it's not worth it to us to do this. So can you skip houses within the community?
Yes, you can.
You can?
Yeah, you can skip them, they, they can join or they don't have to.
Okay.
The good thing about it is that you do have, and I've worked with Mike one in the county, so I kind of got him over here a little bit, but he is, he is certified into the fire inspections as well, but what you're going to find is that in these, in these situations where they don't want to comply, typically you have your annual fire inspections that you go out and you start to take a look at these and then you have to, you know, they will be, I wouldn't say cite, I don't like the word citing, I like to say warn, and give them brochures on how to clear, but they do, they are required annually to clear their lot before fire season per Public Resource Code 4291.
Right, that doesn't deal with the canopy issue, that deals with six, six, takes it off the ground and keep the brush down there.
Yeah.
They do a really good job of enforcing that.
From a homeowner standpoint, that, that's all they're going to be able to do right now. I think it's a great start, there's other programs available like the Fire Safe Council and things like that that we can look at as well. But it's a really, really good start, plus there's a, there's a whole list and the chief wanted to give it to you, a lot of the insurance companies that do give discounts and it's three to 5%, you know. I live in Murphy's and I don't know how I kept my state farm insurance, but 3% to 5% of what it's going up to is, is a little bit of money, so. You know, we are looking at doing Firewise programs in Murphy's as well, so that we have some of those started. I think it's going to be the wave of the future. We don't really have a choice, if you will, we have to do something, the state's not going to come in and, you know, fill us out. The California Fire Plan is in a little bit of trouble, especially now with CalSave Fire and things like that. So I think it's a great start, it's great for the public, it's great for the community, plus it brings these people together in these groups, they get to know each other, get out and work and then they've, then they're a voice, so they're, they're very powerful, our constituents, that will, you know, be able to do this, so. Yeah, is there any other?
Well, this is one of the, this is a response to that group of folks we had come and do a public comment regarding how prepared we are as a city.
Yeah.
To, for fires and this is, this is kind of like a first step, you know, protecting your house and your area and, you know, I have to believe that this is going to help if you have signed up for this program, this is going to help you not have your insurance canceled.
Yes.
I mean, you would, they can find any reason to cancel.
Sure.
But at least if you're a member of this, of this and you have documentation that you're doing it, that's got to help maintain your insurance policy.
Yeah, and I don't know if you're familiar, I don't want to get too far off under the weeds in it, but you're all familiar with ISO ratings in a, in a fire district or the city. And have you heard of FireLine? So FireLine is now what they're using in conjunction with ISO, which is where your fire stations are at, your hydrants and all the things that we used to do to get our numbers as low as possible. Well, now what they're doing and is, it's a huge problem and we're looking, we're addressing it from a Fire Chief standpoint, is it's called FireLine, it's a, it's a satellite imagery of your property and your home. So for example, I'm an insurance agent and you, your policy's up again and I don't just look at your ISO number and go, oh, you're a five, okay, you know, that's what you were before, so we're good and all that. They go, no, they go to FireLine, they take an image of your property, you go, ah, hang on, you got a deck, you got overgrown trees, you got this, you got, you know, you've got wood piled up against your house, you got this and that, and that's where they go, mm, nope. So your FireLine score in conjunction with your ISO rating is what's doing this. And I've spoken to many of the communities here, Calco, went to their Fire Board meeting and spoke about this and this is where this has all been coming up. But it's interesting that we don't really hear this, we don't know about this. So take a look at it, it's called FireLine, it's, it's starting to become very, very prevalent in this and the unfairness of it is, is that you're looking from a camera down that's up in, in the orbit on somebody's property and they say that they're updated images, I'm not so sure about that, but you real, you can't get a fair, you know, now let me just give you a quick example. Valacito, one of our insurance underwriters, who now is our new board member up there, she called me as I was the Fire Marshal for the county and said, hey, my fire insurance just went up to $12,000 a year. She lives on Pope Road off of Angels. And she said, I have a hydrant across my, the street from me, within a thousand feet. Can you come up and take a look at it? And I, so I went up there and I don't, I wasn't even part of the board then or anything, but as a courtesy I did and she does have a very good hydrant across the street. So she called the insurance company and said, I just had the county Fire Marshal come up here and has identified there's a hydrant within a thousand feet. They said, no, you got to get a letter from the Fire Chief. So they went to, to the Fire Chief in Murphy's, got a letter saying that he had, she had a hydrant within a thousand feet, it went down to $6,000. Cut in half by just writing a letter. So that was all based on FireLine. So there's an example of, and I call it that the insurance companies are throwing spaghetti at the wall to see what you'll pay. Some people will complain and some people won't. And if they don't want, they don't want insurers, they don't have to. So anyway.
Thank you.
I have a question about how do we get the word out about this?
That's what I was going to ask, can we do it in open house to?
Yeah, so social media. On May 16th, for the first time ever, we're up in Murphy's, we're doing a symposium workshop for the community, which is going to be called, what did we just name it? I'm in charge of the new Facebook page, which is coming out, but it's, prepare your, prepare for embers or something, so we're doing a flyer that's going out and we're going to talk about home hardening, the new clearance that's coming out where you have to have zero for five feet, you can't have anything against your house, which is going to be the new Public Resource Code 4291. And then we're going to talk about sprinklers, whether they're inside the house or on the exterior of the house. And we're going to start there and we're going to try to do this four times a year. So I think it's important to do that.
May 16th?
May 16th.
And this is in Murphy's?
Yeah, it's in Murphy's at the, at the Training Center up in Murphy's. Now, we, we did, we did just realize that May 16th was beginning a frog jump, so it may change. So we haven't publicly notified anybody yet, but we do have a board meeting, a special board meeting next week to talk about this. So it may change to the following week, but we're excited about putting that together. And Murphy's just hired a brand new Fire Marshal, who's just retired from Long Park City, and she's up here building a new fire prevention program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, so I just want to close with, I mean, we should feel really good about our city. We're one of the only few places around that has a lot of ordinances for redevelopment, for defensible space, you know, the county, most places in the county do not have that. So I just want to, you know, when we work with Fire Council, we work with the plan for the county on a regular basis, I want you guys to feel happy about that. We're very aware of where that super high fire hazard zones are. I know if I'm going to prioritize and try to get an area, I know where I'd like to work on that to try to make some change. So, and as far as getting the word out, I've already talked with the city administrator about doing a social media blast, so we're going to put something on that and I'm completely open to having some kind of a meeting or a town hall to have people come in and we can explain it.
I agree.
I can even put it up on PowerPoint and show them how easy it is and I think we'll probably get a lot of involvement in that.
And I think that online, yeah, like with a Zoom, so people can come in, do a Zoom too.
And you can report it.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree.
All right.
Maybe something in the water bills?
Yeah, I think so too. I was just thinking.
We can send it out with the redevelopment notice, there's one in the water bill.
At the county fair, they have the whole booth and I know Utica, some water agencies did things, I didn't know if the county, you know, OES or, or we could all cooperate.
I'll talk to Eric Holt and I'll also talk to CalFire because maybe we can put something out there.
Yeah, I mean, because it's a stamp by yourself, it'd be pretty rough.
OES and CalFire, because even if you have something, maybe we get some, some.
Flyers.
Some type of flyer or.
Right, some OES flyers, you got the embers and, yeah, I mean.
And you know, they send you like, there's three things here that.
Whoa.
They send you three things, so we can get all these we want for free?
Yeah.
So we can put, you know, something about Angels Camp is promoting Firewise program and we can have all these out there and we can have like our stamp on the bottom of there or something.
Yeah, I don't know, I just, that's coming up pretty quick in a month.
Especially with Summer around the corner.
No, no, it might be helpful is if, if we knew which neighborhoods were applying for this already, if I found out my neighbors are doing it, maybe I want to jump in too.
So right now, the neighborhoods that I know that are working on it is.
Angels Oaks.
Angels Oaks, Greenhorn and half of Finnegan right now.
So it's outside, but I don't know, there's not a homeowners association in Stealthy, is there?
There is not, uh-uh.
Yeah.
There's not any.
And there is, and there is no.
Not a home.
And there is no, I think you said, eight-member board.
Yeah, it's true.
But I don't, I just got some new literature on that, that they're not, there's not the requirement, the size requirement for the board, so you could probably have one, two, three people or get it, get it going, right? Yeah, I just got that today.
Country Lena Estates, that's a great one, they do have, I think, an HOA and they, they all, they all, they have like meetings and they have stuff where they're gathering, that would be an easy neighborhood to get in front of.
Okay, yeah, that sounds great, that'll be, I'll find out who the president of HOA is and make contact.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Are there any comments from our audience? Anybody online? Rose?
I'm really excited about this, thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you, thank you for bringing it to our attention. We're moving on to item 11, Admin Report.
So aside from the, um.
Where's that?
Marsh, my report, I attended a handful of online meetings with the county, so COG and meeting with staff regarding Capitol Public Projects and those items, and the, I would like to leave the sharing about the meeting that we had on April 11th with Vice Mayor Sharado. I would rather have her shared that one, when I was really excited about being a participant on that one. However, I do want to share a news that the Chief of Police had shared with me this afternoon that the City of Angels Police Department had received a gold award from Lefseple Connect in 2014, Excellence in Law Enforcement Policy Management. So for those who are not familiar with Lefseple, it is a private company that provides policy manuals, training bulletins and consulting services for law enforcement agencies, fire departments and other public safety departments. So how, how big is Lefseple? 35 out of 50 states are participating, have Lefseple, with 3,500 agencies throughout the nation participating in that. And they're pretty much, what they do is that the founders were not just law enforcement officers, they're also lawyers. And so they built this establishment so that they would have benchmarks for municipalities, districts, agencies to follow, so that they have policy manuals and stuff. So for Angels Camp to receive this award that pretty much had, is a gold standard that we've set a very great bar for other municipalities, large, small, to follow. And so congratulations to Chief Ellis and team for their efforts, thank you so much.
He just got called out. He just got called out. He just went out the door, he's just going to call.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
That is it, sir.
Okay, we're moving on to item 12, council reports, Mr. Beal.
Let's see, I attended the COG, and then I also had a meeting with Lois Arashu to kind of get caught up on what's going over there. Bottom line, I guess, is that Wagon Trail, Highway 4, the third phase is just not going to be completed anytime soon. Its phases one and two are going to be done, and then there might be some design work done on Phase 3, but it, it just won't be finished in, in any kind of, still don't have the money for it. And so that was kind of a eye-opener, or disappointing thing for me to hear, but that's what it was. We're looking, they're looking for projects right now, it's, we want the city to basically think about what it is we need or want, and, and throw against the board and see what sticks. There's a lot of money out there right now, and the COG is not, does not have a lot of projects in front of them. So whether it's, you know, bike and ped stuff, whether it's, you know, beautification or, or, you know, anything, because we can, we can check it out and provide a list and see if we can get it going. And it's Monday.
Really?
So on Friday, we went, as Pam was saying, we went on a tour of Utica Water Power Authority, and we also had CCWD, Union, and NCPA actually joined us as well. And we met with Assemblyman Tonkiba, and he joined us for about three hours. We started at McKay's Reservoir, which I'd never been to before, and it's, it's massive, it's amazing, it was great, we saw Bald Eagle, that was cool. But we started there, we worked our way down, we stopped at Hunter's Dam, took a look there really quickly, and then went over to, to the Union's water treatment plant, and then ended at Murphys Powerhouse. And so it was great being able to show all of the different, like watersheds, how water comes down, the importance of all that mitigation for wildfires, we talked a lot about wildfire mitigation. I also got in other conversations with him about insurance issues, obviously fire insurance is a big issue, he kind of was talking a little bit about what was going on with that. State Farm is not in good shape right now and may end up leaving the state, so that's kind of a big thing, and it's going to be up to our insurance commission to decide whether or not what their rating's going to be and whether they're going to stay or go. And so he said though, that it's going to be like a minimum raise of 22% for most homeowners in California. So that was just something to keep, keep an eye on. I talked to him about PG&E rates, I talked to him about logging and all sorts of, those types of things going on here in the, in the area. But it was really, for me, just seeing how our water comes down and how we do intermingle with CCWD and CPA, like our Angels Camp water goes through all of these systems, and so it was, it was great to see, very educational, it was great that Pam was able to be there. And it was a really, it was really great for relationship building with those agencies, and I felt like that was really important, equally important. So he walked away, he wants to bring in some of the state senators and state assemblymen from down south who have no idea where the water comes from, and has no idea about really, like these traditional antiquated systems of flumes and canals, but he has asked if we'd be open to that, and he said, of course we would be open.
Well, thank you for representing us.
Yeah, that's great.
Isabel?
The only thing I have to report is I attended the grand opening for the salon last Wednesday. It was well-attended, and it's always exciting to see new businesses flourishing downtown.
I also attended COG, there was the Regional Transportation Plan update, so this is something that has to be done for funding and different things, so it's a 20-year outlook. There will be, if anybody would like to, there's the project website, we can get on to that, and there are some upcoming meetings and sessions to attend, because this is not a final document yet, this is just the start. We did move some money from our project onto a county project for the CMAC funding, and once again, like what Scott was saying, we need to get some more, and Amanda, the county, the county's in, the county's in the same boat, we don't have a whole lot of projects for that California air quality, CMAC, I forget, yeah. We need to get some projects in there so we don't miss out on funding that comes our way. That was it, there wasn't much for Calgress Transit, did not have much, it was just a quickie, couple verbal comments on that. For Utica, we have a major leak going on, and I would just like to thank all the other agencies. I was, I swung by yesterday, we got part of some grant Monday, money, that we got, it's good, we got money for some grant, and that all worked out. But the, we have a hole open over there in the parking lot with the leaky valve, and Jeremy Wood was there with CCWD in the back truck, Towalome has some parts, we have some parts, Murphy's got some things, so we're all robbing parts and making things work, and, and the mutual aid has been wonderful, so I would like to thank all those agencies that's helped out.
Murphy's Sanitary was the one that, I didn't realize was involved, and then TUD was the one that saved the day with the two valves, and we came over this morning on a truck, so that was great.
Yeah, and...
So flow, water should be flowing tomorrow, he said, pipe fitting is done, pressure test tomorrow morning, and then we can fire up Angel Showerhouse, so...
Yeah, I think that valve was from eighteen...
Eighteen, yeah, old.
Why was it sixty-four? I don't know, it was old. It was over a hundred and something years old.
Yeah, and I asked, I go, well, how's the pen stock actually, like, what's, and he said, a little degraded, but actually in pretty good shape in that section, I was like, that's excellent.
So...
Bury it back up.
Exactly.
I'm not burying it.
When I was there, Frank and Kyle and Jeremiah and Ryan were down in the hole with shoring and different things, so they were all doing a wonderful job, so thank you to all them.
They're really good, yeah.
So...
Excellent, excellent stuff with our, our neighbors, so...
Yep, that's all I got.
So I attended the grand opening of Foxy Face and Sculpture and Glow, and along with the salon. Tomorrow we go to CPPA, the rates are going to go up to 18 cents a kilowatt. And we are in negotiations with Western and PG&E to see if we can stop PG&E from doing the kinds of swings that they're doing. It's going to be interesting how that maneuvers, but, you know, maybe, you know, we'll get some middle ground to where the rates go down to 12%, but then mid-year they go up to 20%, and we got to figure out how to fund that. But right now, the tentative budget is based on 18%. Also, as Amy mentioned, it's on the agenda is our grant request, and hopefully it'll be funded tomorrow. And I think that's, that's it, I think, so. Correspondence?
No.
Going on to the calendar?
The calendar wasn't included in your packet, but I've got it up here on the screen. UWPA meeting is on Tuesday, the 22nd, also for the 23rd, there's another mixer, the Paul James Jewelers from Five to Seven. Then I emailed you the kickoff dinner, which is on April 30th, at 4:30 for the fair.
The 30th, correct?
The 30th, yeah.
So make sure you guys...
I'll call Lori.
...RSVP on that. And then we're starting into May. Is there anything that I should be adding, or any meetings that you're not going to be attending?
I think you might be able to put the, the part tentative opening dates for that, so...
So when we decided that was the 12th, correct? That's a soft opening with the grand opening on the 31st?
Yeah.
And then Rose, I'll be out of town from May 30th till June 8th.
Okay. All right, that's all I know.
Thank you for covering for me.
You're welcome. So future agenda items, Scott?
I have none for me.
Caroline?
I don't have anything.
Isabel?
Nope, I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, well then, my turn. This is shocking. One of them is, I've been approached by some of the businesses downtown regarding parking signage. I talked with Chris, and he shared with me that they're in the process of letting a contract. The issue is RVs parked along the road, and they take up more than two or three spots, and I talked with Scott about that, but also there, the signage that is pointing to parking that's not on Main Street, I didn't realize there was those beautiful signs by Pickle Porch, because the trees are kind of covering them, and, and Chris is in the process of letting the contract, so that's trimmed. I, you know, anything that we can do to help promote that, I, I think would, would be good. I'm not sure what the, what the council's pleasure is in, you know, developing an ordinance about the size of vehicles being parked downtown. I think, you know, you live there, I, you know, I often wonder, you have to be pretty lucky to get an RV or a boat, a truck and a boat in, in those parking spots too, so... But there has been, Amy has shared that there has been damage to buildings, I think the McCullough Building was hit the other day with, with a truck, so...
We know that Angels Theater's been hit many times.
Or Angels Theater, yeah.
So, I mean, it, maybe it's something that the council wants to consider. And then I, I shared with, with Michelle and Pam Uniform, is that what, what is that?
It's backing in.
Backing up.
Oh, it's an engine came back.
Uniform cost accounting procedures that, that I'm familiar, the city and, and school districts can enter into an agreement with the state, and it helps expedite the bidding process. You still have to go through things, but you can have a list of bidders that you can take projects to, that, that increases the threshold that you can go to without going out to bid, and actually it allows projects, I think the current level is $200,000, to, we could let those contracts out and open it up to folks that have signed up. So there's a little bit of work that we have to do on an annual basis, and I know that you and Michelle are exploring that, I, I think that would be an asset to our city. It's too bad that Scott left, I was approached by another citizen regarding Gardner Lane and Murphy's Gray Road, especially when there's a ballgame, people are parked on both sides of the road, so it's very difficult to go out there and try to make a left or right turn going on to Murphy's Gray. Scott had a great suggestion of just putting no parking signs up, and I think that would take an ordinance like 100 feet, so very much like when our crosswalks are painted, or, I mean, the, the curbs before the crosswalks are painted red, that would kind of do the same thing, that back traffic back off a little bit. And again, that tends to be a busy intersection, so that's something that the council might want to consider, just doing no parking 100 feet back from the intersection. And the last thing is, and, and I think it has to be an item on the agenda, the, what John and Baranka talked about tonight, the banners. If it has to start as action directing our planning commission to look at that item, then I'd, I'd like to see us place that on the agenda, and then give direction to planning, if it has to go in that direction. And I have one more thing that Amy shared with me about crosswalks, thank you Pam and Amy for finding that, and there is some, if there's some money by COG, we did a study in 2017 to upgrade our, our crosswalks, and it's a, it's a wonderful plan, you may remember it, Alvin?
Before my...
Was it before?
Could have been, I don't know, either way.
But it's, it's a wonderful plan that at some point, I know Pam, that you will share on Amy, and that's all I have.
Isn't, isn't that was starting, they're starting construction this week or this month on something 12 million dollar project down Main Street, that beautification and all that, isn't that what that is?
It's the, um...
I'm sure eight years later, that would be what it was.
Right, it's the sidewalk and safe streets.
Oh, safe streets.
Safe streets for school.
So they're, is that what they're going to do in front of the park and extend the sidewalk?
Yeah, so it's extending the sidewalk, and it's also doing the landscaping and those planters, and there was some new additional sidewalks going in and things like that.
Yeah.
But that, it wasn't going to downtown, it, it stops before downtown.
It's off, sort of that.
Yeah, and so the downtown project, though, came up, the Caltrans program, or project came up, like at the two meetings that go at COG, where Caltrans said that they did do a study, they did take a look at downtown crosswalks, and they did determine that they were not as safe as they should be, and so there was going to be some movement on that. So, but I think that, that taking a look at some of that COG money might be good to put towards that too, if, if we have to, but maybe we don't need to, maybe Caltrans will just deal with it, work with it.
So I mean, we have to keep our fingers crossed that it's not all gloom and doom too for the Wagon Trail project.
No, no, it's, no, it's not.
You know.
It's, it's mostly, no, not gloom or doom, it's mostly good news, like two-thirds of it's going to get done.
Yeah, the worst parts of it are going to get done, which is good.
And there was one that...
We're going to, we're going to fund part of the design, if people continue to fund the design and maybe right-of-way aspect, it's getting that construction phase completed, that's where we will need some help in that, so...
And so my next question, because I'm still the newbie here, do we, with, with this whole ordinance 15.12, do we have to take it back to council first, or can, if council agrees, it's not an agendized item, I understand that, that's why I'm going to stop.
Yep.
That's why I'm going to stop. Well, this app, if we, could we get it on, clearly get it on the May agenda, though?
We will put that in the agenda.
So that we can move that concern forward. And then are we going to be talking about in May the rates that we're going to implement? Is it going to be the first meeting?
It's the third, it's with the budget.
Oh, it's with the budget, so it's not going to be in May where we're going to...
I don't, I, we have, we talked about it this morning, you have your...
Is that the traffic mitigation fee?
No, that's coming.
That's coming.
This is, this is the water fees, how much money we want to implement.
That's right, because we had to wait for the 180.
Yes.
920.
920.
Maybe it was June 2nd, which the...
Or the first part of June.
First part of June for the rates, okay.
Went out like three months, this is what you wanted to do.
I don't mind, so...
Yes.
But you wanted to go to planning first.
Well, no, it does, but I think the board has to take action and send it back to planning, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
And it's not on the agenda, so we can't probably do that, we have to wait and get direction from council to give to Amy, so Amy can take it to planning. Right, Amy? Thank you, Amy.
It's a process.
Yep.
Everything, that's what I was trying to text you today, that's a process.
Oh, I know, it's a process.
All right.
That's why you got to start.
You're working with someone who knows the process.
Step one.
Anyone, anyone from the community suggest any future agenda items?